I now call to order this meeting of the Eau Claire School Board. Maida, can you confirm we are in compliance with the open meeting law notification?
Yes, we are.
Please conduct a roll call to verify a quorum.
Commissioner Becca? Commissioner Clements?
Here.
Commissioner Harder? Commissioner Lyons?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Zer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Becca?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harder? Commissioner Harder, are you able to respond? I see Commissioner Harder, but I am not able to hear him. Commissioner Harder, are you able to respond? We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Would those who are willing and able, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Abby, would you please begin the organizational meeting?
Sure. Nominations are now in order for the office of the president.
So Abby, I think Dr. Becca has a question. Sorry, I don't know how to be, not how we get recognized at this point.
Okay. Commissioner Becca, can we hear your question, please?
Sure. Yeah, I was wondering, this is not something we've done before, but I was wondering if maybe we could spend a little time just kind of talking about the responsibilities of these different positions, maybe people's perspectives, having served in the positions. I know that I want to talk a little bit about experiences as vice president and kind of think about other people who might like to try that out this year. I know we've got some differences with the new governance model, just some differences in what these positions are doing and just for people to feel like that they have a good sense of what these are all about and if it's something that they might like to try. I think it's okay.
Superintendent Johnson, do you agree?
I would agree, sure.
Sure. If there's any more, then go ahead.
Yeah, so I feel like that probably falls to me then to talk about the president first as the maybe the only person on the board that's served as president, even without not being the longest tenured. The responsibilities of the president are outlined in G C four currently, and I don't think too many of them shift from the old model to the new model. It's definitely, it's chair of the meeting, it's act as a spokesperson for the board. Oftentimes, I get media requests directed to me from other board members, although other board members are free to speak to the media as they choose. Certainly, there's additional meetings with the superintendent. There's always attending the agenda setting meeting and those sorts of things. And then there's responsibility for drafting the evaluation letter for the superintendent and several other things. It certainly, I will say, is significantly more time investments than at least my first year as a board member that was not in that role. But there's obviously, there's the ability to help move the board along and take on different projects. Is there other specific questions that could be addressed for the president position? Thank you Superintendent Johnson and Abby for allowing us to just share a little bit about the experience.
I have a question. Are we going to walk through each of the positions or are we going to focus on the president?
Yeah, I think we'll do them as they come up.
As they come up. Then I would like to nominate Tim Nordine as president of the school.
I second that nomination.
Okay. So Tim Nordine is nominated. Is there any other nominations? So no other nominations have been heard, so nominations are now closed. You should have a link to vote for this school board president. So if you can complete that form at this time, then I can let you know.
Abby, as a point of order, I will accept the nomination.
I'm sorry, Tim, I missed that part.
Oh, that's all right.
I heard the second, so I was excited.
Yeah. Maida had sent an email just a few little while ago, and it's like a Word document that you can click into with a clickable link, just like when we did the appointments for the new members. And it'll take you to a form.
So we have six responses in, and all of them say Tim Nordine. So congratulations, Tim, you are again the school board president for the next year.
Thank you.
So would you like to take them from here?
I would be pleased to, thank you. The next office that we will elect is the office of the vice president. I'll first turn it over to Dr. Becca to talk about the role of the vice president. And of course, you can refer back to G C four for all of these as well. So Dr. Becca?
So the most often, the responsibility is participating a lot with the president in agenda setting. So that's a really great way to kind of get to know some of the, you know, kind of in our workings, especially as we know transition, new style of agenda. Facilitating meetings, this doesn't happen very often. I think I've only done it a couple of times. A new change, which I think will be great, is facilitating the board self-evaluation. So it's a really nice, nice new addition to the responsibilities for the vice president. I do believe I have enjoyed my time doing it. I would be happy to continue. This is not just me in a polite way saying I want to be nominated. I really do believe that it helps when leadership changes and to have opportunities for new people to come in, have that same experience. I think we just grow, you know, as a group. The more people know, you know, then we grow that way. I would be even happier to have somebody else do it because really, it's going to be great, however it works out. So I invite other people who are interested really to come forward.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask for nominations for vice president.
I would nominate Lori Becca.
Second.
Dr. Becca, would you accept the nomination? Are there other nominations for vice president? Hearing none, I'd ask the board to use the form that Maida has for voting for vice president. Remember that it's a different link for each office, so please make sure you hit the correct link.
Okay, and we have, the results are Commissioner Becca, you have been reelected as vice president.
Thank you. The next office is the clerk governance officer. I'll first turn it to Commissioner Clements, who has served as our clerk over the past year, and then I'll take a minute to just refresh our discussion on the role of the governance officer from our development of the new governance policies. So Commissioner Clements, if you'd please share your responsibilities as the clerk.
Absolutely, thank you, President Nordine. So as the clerk, my primary responsibilities have been signing, reviewing and signing documents, both physical, hard documents as well as electronically, and also the keeping of minutes for closed session meetings of the board when the clerk designee is not appropriate for that duty.
Thank you. And if you'll remember, we added the governance officer position to the elected clerk position. The governance officer, by our policies, again, it's all G C four, is in charge of identifying activities and professional development opportunities that will help improve and monitor the board's performance, as well as providing periodic assurance that the board is in compliance with its governance culture policies, including policy review. So that would be that person, if you'll remember Steve Tempest from DeForest saying, is in the meeting and should the board go off track, it's their responsibility to potentially even interrupt and say, you know, this is not a board matter or we're going too far afield. Remember Dr. Johnson talking about it needing to be, you know, there's a personality that has, if you're not willing to do that, then perhaps do not accept the nomination in this particular field. Dr. Becca, you worked along on some of the development of this. Do you have anything you want to add about governance officer? So in that case, I would open the floor to nominations for the clerk governance officer. Commissioner Lyons?
I would like to nominate Markell Johnson.
Dr. Johnson, would you accept the nomination for the clerk governance officer?
Okay, yeah, as I expressed, I appreciate the nomination from Commissioner Lyons. Yeah, but I was the one that voted against the governance model, so that's kind of interesting that I'm the governor, I was nominated for the governance officer. But yeah, I accept the nomination. I appreciate the willingness to nominate me, thank you.
I accept the nomination. Is that necessary?
Seconds for nominations are not necessary, and in fact, we only have a few left to go. Dr. Becca and I had actually reviewed some of the original policy and what we have currently as our governing policy. You can also nominate yourself for any position in the future, which... So seconds are not necessary, but obviously that's... Okay, let me just make sure that I have... Abby has sent me a message, I want to review that before I go. Oh, that's fine, Abby, no big deal. Anyway, are there additional nominations for clerk governance officer? Hearing none, I will ask you to proceed to the vote. Abby, actually, because it is difficult for me to open my phone to take a text message while wearing a mask, I would be happy if you would report the results.
Okay, great, thanks, Tim. So it is unanimous for Dr. Johnson as the clerk governance officer.
Thank you. Our next election is for the clerk designee. Abby, I want to ask you to share a little bit about it, but obviously you can be brief because you're the one who's always nominated for this. But then it would at least help us know what we're telling you, what we're asking you to do.
Sure. So it actually is pretty simple. I will sign off. Usually it's typically around election time when we need to certify or put things in the newspaper related to elections, or it's usually something that has just been part of my role. So it's probably two to three times a year where I sign on behalf of the school board clerk designee.
Thank you. At this time, I would accept a nomination for clerk designee.
Nominate Abby Johnson.
Thank you. Abby, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I can accept the nomination.
Are there any other nominees for clerk designee? Hearing none, please proceed to the vote.
And it's also unanimous that I have been elected the clerk designee.
Thank you, Abby. Our next election is for the officer of treasure. Commissioner Harder, if you would please share the responsibilities of the treasurer.
Sure. Well, it's pretty straightforward. It's occasional sign, very occasional signing, it has been this year, of checks and other documents related to the finances. A lot of it ends up being delegated, that was my experience.
Thank you. At this time, I would hear nominations for the office of treasurer.
I nominate Commissioner Harder.
Commissioner Harder, do you accept the nomination?
Sure, yes.
Are there additional nominations for treasurer? Hearing none, please proceed to the vote.
And it's unanimous that Commissioner Harder has been elected treasurer.
Thank you. Our final election is for the office of secretary. Maida, if you'd take a moment to try to summarize all of the work that we ask you to do into a one-minute speech reel, that would be great.
Sure, I take the minutes for the board, index all board action, take care of legal notices, put together the board packet, all of those wonderful things.
And just as a previous thing, please accept the nomination because we appreciate you. At this time, I would hear a nomination for the office of secretary. Maida, do you accept the nomination?
Of course.
Thank you. Are there other nominations for secretary? Hearing none, please proceed to vote.
And once again, Maida has been elected the school board secretary.
Thank you. That concludes the election of board officers. Do we need a motion for the adjournment of the organizational meeting?
No, we don't.
Great. Then at that time, this time, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the adoption of the agenda. This is a new item on our board agenda with the new governance. All seats is just formally approved the agenda for the evening. I would hear a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please... Actually, with the blended model, let's just go ahead and keep it clarity with a roll call.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
At this time, we'll move on to our public forum. I have not seen a chat as to whether we have people signed up for tonight's public forum.
We have no members of the public signed up.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to reports. We'll start with our student representatives' reports. This week, we will start with our representative from Memorial High School, Emory Tool.
Hello, can you hear me all right?
Can.
All right. Well, I can't really say that students can't be content with the decision to return to four days a week has subsided. As they begin completing the transition back, things should hopefully settle into place for the last couple of weeks of the year. Alongside the transition, AP exams have started. AP students and teachers have spent a long and really particularly difficult year preparing for these exams, so I just wanted to wish my peers all the best, and I'm really quite certain that their efforts will pay off in these following weeks. And finally, I just want to continue to urge support to listen to student voices. I was quite encouraged by some shifts I've heard of, lots more student input sparked by this change to the hearing governance. I really do hope that the next year's representatives can offer more input and therefore be a greater impact to the board.
Thank you. Without turning to our representative from North High School, Zoe Wolf.
Hello. Today was the first day of AP testing and returning to school for four days a week. I participated in the AP GOV test this morning, so I was unable to attend first or sixth hour. However, I made it to the last few resource hours. It was good to see everyone together, and most people were excited to see their friends as well. The afternoon was a bit chaotic, but that's to be expected considering it was the first day. Teachers appear to be adjusting and are also excited to have students together. Although it was good to see so many people I hadn't seen in a while, I still hold my previous stance. This was a decision that should have had student, family, and teacher input. When decisions are made that affect a majority of the population, district-wide input is necessary. Also, reflecting what Emory said about the student representative position, I really like what this coherent governance is going to do and how it's going to change the position. So I think that's really going to help make the representatives more resourceful. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to start my report tonight first by thanking our teachers and staff on behalf of the board during Teacher Staff Appreciation Week. We know that this year, you've worked harder than any other in your career. And I'm echoing Superintendent Johnson's message for this afternoon. We want you to know that we see your hard work as board members, and we honor it on behalf of our children and our whole community. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Tonight, you've already likely noticed the different format of our agenda. This goes along with our new governance model, and I wanted to take a short moment tonight to highlight a few of the changes. First, in accordance with our focus on student results, the administrative team will be presenting each meeting regarding outcomes for our students. This will certainly look different meeting to meeting and may include things such as test results, highlights from individual schools or programs, student representative projects, and other aspects pertaining to our results policies. This will help in the annual lead-up to the formal monitoring of our results policies and focus our work each meeting on the primary objective of our board work, which is moving towards, the district moving towards the board's vision of overall results for our students. We've also separated the consent agenda into two sections, delineating the role of the superintendent's work and that of the board. Over the coming weeks, you will also see different agenda sections for matters that the board has reserved for its own action, board development, and of course, monitoring district results and operations policies. Monitoring reports will begin in our June meeting with OE one. Finally, we will include a meeting debrief at the end of each meeting to monitor our own performance. We are starting trying out the whip-around format used by DeForest and recommended by Quinn and Dawson. Commissioner Lyons will facilitate that discussion at the end of this meeting. Dr. Becca, Maida, Superintendent Johnson, and I met last week to set a generalized template for agenda setting that should make agenda setting easier when paired with our annual work calendar, which will hopefully be approved in its current form tonight. The agenda process will, of course, continue to evolve as we move ahead through this new model. Thank you. At this time, I will ask for a report from the Budget Development Committee from Commissioner Harder.
Thank you. We actually did not meet since our last general business meeting, so there's no report, although we will be meeting next Wednesday.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the superintendent's consent agenda. The board operates both its consent agendas with one vote without discussion. The board has received information about items on the consent agenda at previous meetings or in between meetings. The superintendent's consent agenda deals with items that are delegated to the superintendent that the board must rule on legally and any other work that is the superintendent's responsibility. Tonight's superintendent consent agenda includes human resources employment report, Locust Lane roof recommendation, and WIAA membership renewal for 2021, 2022. At this time, I would hear a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda. Maida, if you would please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
We'll now move on to the board's consent agenda. Once again, the board approves the consent agenda with one vote without discussion. I neglected to say last time, but of course, it remains standing that if a board member wishes to discuss an individual item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. Tonight's board consent agenda consists of the minutes of April 19, 2021, minutes of closed session, April 19, 2021, and minutes of policy and governance committee of April 22, 2021. At this time, I would hear a motion to approve the board consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Maida, if you would conduct a roll call vote, then we'll go back to Superintendent Johnson, who has information after the consent agendas.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Superintendent Johnson, I believe you have some announcements.
Yes, I do, thank you. Ashley Hensley graduated from the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire in 2008 with a bachelor of science degree in elementary education and a minor in general science. In 2019, she also earned a master's degree from the Turbow University in Educational Leadership. She holds licenses through the Wisconsin D P I to work as a principal and to teach middle childhood and early adolescence. In 2010, Ashley began a teaching career in Arizona, teaching seventh grade science at the Santa Maria Middle School in the Fowler School District. The following two years, she worked as an interventionist and as a science teacher for the Camden County School District in Georgia. In 2015, she returned to Wisconsin and began working for the Eau Claire School District. She worked as a fourth-grade teacher at Northwoods Elementary for four years. In 2019, she transferred to Sherman Elementary, where she worked as a behavioral interventionist. During the current school year, she is both teaching fifth grade at Sherman and working in her behavioral interventionist role. Ashley will now be transferring to North High School as an assistant principal, starting with the 2021, 2022 school year. Congratulations.
Thank you, and congratulations from the board to Ms. Hensley. We wish you the best of luck, Ed Nor. We'll now move on to focus on results. Tonight, we have the sharing of some of the elementary results, dealing with the equitable multi-level system of support. Superintendent Johnson, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Nordine. I actually would like to, I appreciate this in this our first foray into coherent governance agenda with some results. Was able to speak with Jim Schmidt and some of his leadership team, and very excited for Jim to introduce his team and to introduce this presentation tonight. Please take it away, Jim.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. Good evening. Tonight will be our first collective effort at focusing on results through the board's inquiry and governance model. Collecting and reviewing district-wide data through the pandemic has been a challenge. Once the school year is over, we will have many more data sets to review and even more as we make our way through the summer. These first data are limited, focusing on the STAR assessment for grades one through five. This evening, our team will explain the tool, what it tells us, its limitations in our results as students progress from fall to winter this school year. I want to remind all of us to use this evening as practice for reviewing data. We typically try to triangulate data before making final determinations. This triangulation typically involves data from at least three major sources, such as the STAR, the forward exam, and classroom common assessments. Tonight's presentation will focus on student growth. Michelle Recky, our Director of Assessment, will walk us through the STAR and resulting data. Dan Lusneski, Principal of Putnam Heights Elementary School, and Colleen Minor, Principal of Lake Shore Elementary School, will then provide school and classroom-based context regarding how data are used to guide instructional decisions. And finally, Becky Graff, our Director of Agenda and Services, will share a particular instructional plan for next year. These plans have been guided by teacher teams, school visits with teachers and principals, and our student results. So I'm excited to pass the torch to the self-standing team with Michelle Recky starting us off.
Good evening. One part of the universal level of our EMLS S is having a balanced assessment system. When a balanced assessment system is in place, there is a purposeful alignment of assessments, and these assessments are used in the data inquiry process. The three types of assessments that make up a balanced assessment system are formative, interim, and summative. Tonight, we are going to be viewing data from one of our interim assessments used in grades one through five, the STAR assessment. Interim assessments are designed to benchmark and monitor progress. The data from interim assessments provide multiple data points over time and permit aggregation and trend analysis at the classroom, grade, school, and district levels. STAR assessment is considered a universal screener. Universal screeners are usually brief and are typically administered three times a year. The windows for STAR this year were the middle of September to the middle of October, the month of January, and the last one is during the month of May. All students participate in the screening process on grade level to help identify how students perform compared to their peer group. Universal screeners are usually only administered in reading and math. Screeners help to identify gaps at the universal level and at the classroom level. They help to start the discussion about students who may be excelling, students who may be struggling, and students that are in need of supports. In the Eau Claire Area School District, students in grades one through two either take the STAR Early Literacy or STAR Reading. They start with STAR Early Literacy, and once they achieve a certain scale score, they transition to STAR Reading. There is a unified scale between STAR Early Literacy and STAR Reading. All students, grades one through eight, take STAR Math. The STAR assessment is computer adaptive, which is when the test continually adjusts the difficulty of each child's test by choosing each test question based on the previous response. STAR Early Literacy takes approximately 15 minutes, whereas STAR Reading and Math take approximately 30 minutes each. Students are able to use accommodations that they regularly use in their classroom and that they would use on the forward exam. Students also can take this assessment in Spanish. Tonight, we're going to look at both growth data and proficiency data. When looking at growth data, we will be referring to a student growth percentile, or more known as an SGP. SGPs are normative growth measures that compare a student's growth from one period to another with that of his or her academic peers nationwide. Students are compared to other students in the same grade with a similar scale score history. SGPs help us understand where students started and the extent of the growth that was achieved or was expected. A common misunderstanding regarding SGP scores is that their statistical distribution is normal, like a bell curve. This would mean that there are more SGPs reported in the middle, near 50, than at the tails, near one and 99. This is not true for SGPs. Within any subject or grade, the number of scores reported at every point between one and 99 nationwide are about the same. Each score is reported for about 1% nationwide for students. There will be approximately the same number of students with an SGP of 50 and six, or 99 and 37. Because of this uniform distribution, all students, regardless of score history, have a good chance of demonstrating high growth as low growth. When working with SGPs, students are put into growth categories. If they receive a 1 to a 34 SGP, they are in a low-growth category, which means they are on track to make a, to not make a year worth of growth during that year. If they have an SGP of a 35 to 64, they are considered typical growth, and they are on track to make a year of growth in that year. If they receive a 65 to a 99, they are on a high-growth category, and they are on track to make more than a year growth. This is when we start to see gaps closing. The data that we are looking at today is the growth data based on from the fall to winter assessment windows. This data will be re-reviewed again in the spring after our May assessment at the district, school, and grade levels. As we disaggregated our reading data from STAR, here are some of our findings. 86.4% of our students in grade two are on track to make a year or more of growth in the 2021 school year. Approximately 65% of students in grades one, three, four, and five are on track to make a year or more of growth in the 2021 school year. In all grades, a higher percentage of females in reading are on track to make a year or more of growth as compared to males. In all grades except grade two, a higher percentage of white students are on track to make a year or more of growth as compared to non-white students. More findings. In grade five, a higher percentage in reading of students in special education are on track to make a year of growth as compared to students not in special education. In all grades, a higher percentage of students not economically disadvantaged are on track to make a year or more of growth as compared to students who are economically disadvantaged. And in all grades, a higher percentage of students who are English proficient are on track to make a year or more of growth as compared to students who are limited English proficient. As we look at this graph, we are able to see the percentage of students in each grade level that have a low, which is signified in the red, typical, which is the green, and high growth, which is the turquoise. In the past, we have generally had one-third of students in all three categories, low, typical, and high, with the goal to decrease the percentage of students in the low-growth category. A highlight from the growth data that you are looking at right now is that second grade only has 13.6% of students in low growth. The other grades that there is a smaller percentage of students in the typical category with a larger percentage of students in both the low and the high-growth categories. As a system, we like to look at the students who are achieving in the high-growth category and disaggregate this data by the supports students are receiving to try to find any trends for future instruction and supports. We also want to disaggregate the students in the low growth, the students that are not making, that are not on track to make a year's worth of growth, to see any trends to understand supports we need to implement. Then we'd like to look at the growth data as in years past. And to compare the growth data from last year, before we went into safer at home, you will see the growth percentages in each category did not change at a significant level at third grade, which is on the left side. We have seen a change in the low growth and typical growth at fourth grade, which is in the center, with the low growth increasing from last year by 5.6%, and the typical growth decreasing by 4.1%. In fifth grade, which is on the right, we also saw an increase in the low growth from last year by 5.4%, while the high growth decreased by 3.9%. The other way we like to look at this data is by proficiency. The STAR assessment predicts how students will perform on the forward exam. In third grade, which is on the left side, and fourth grade in the center, we are seeing an increase in the red, which is below basic, yellow, which is basic, and a decrease in the green, which is proficient, and blue, which is in the advanced categories. In fifth grade, we are not seeing, we are seeing consistency to the way the students were predicted to perform last year to the way that they are predicted to perform this year. The last way that we like to look at the data is to determine if there are any correlations between growth and proficiency. From this graph, you can determine that the students that are predicted to perform in the below basic category, which is on the left-hand side, is the higher percentage of students are in the low-growth category, which they're in not on track to make a year's worth of growth. As we move over to the advanced category, which is on the right-hand side, a higher percentage of these students are in the high-growth category, which they are expected to make more than a year's worth of growth. When we move on to the math data and we disaggregate that data, we, some of the findings are that a higher percentage of males in math are on track to make a year or more of growth than females in all grades except grade one. And in math in all grades except grades two and five, a higher percentage of white students are on track to make a year or more of growth as compared to non-white students. In grade two, a higher percentage of students that are black are on track to make a year or more of growth as compared to their white students, to white students. In grade five, a higher percentage of students who are black or two or more are on track to make more, a year or more of growth as compared to white students. In all grades, a higher percentage of students not economically disadvantaged are on track to make a year or more of growth as compared to students who are economically disadvantaged, and a higher percentage of students who are English proficient are on track to make a year or more of growth as compared to students who are limited English proficient. As compared to reading, math, we are showing a higher percentage of students in the low-growth category, which is signified in the red. And second grade has the highest percentage of students, again, who are in the typical and high-growth areas categories. Grades one and three stand out as not having a one-third of the students in each of the category, but having more students in the low-growth category. In comparing to last year, we are seeing a 19.1% increase in grade three in the low-growth area and a decrease in the high growth of 18.3%. When we look in the center at grade four, we saw an increase in the low growth of 7.6% and a decrease in the high growth of 12.2%. In grade five, we saw an increase in low growth of 4% and an increase in typical growth of 2.4%, but the high growth decreased by 6.3%. When we look at the proficiency level of math and how they are predicted to do on the forward exam, we are seeing from last year an increase of the students in grades three, four, and five in below basic and basic, and a decrease in the percentage of students in proficient and advanced in all three grades. The same, the same is what we found in reading, we have found in math. From this graph, you can determine that the students that are predicted to perform in the below basic category, a higher percentage of students are in the low-growth category. And as we move to the advanced category, a higher percentage of students are in the high-growth category. This is the data from our fall to winter assessment. And next, Colleen Minor and Diana Lusneski are going to walk us through the structures that we have in place to strategically use this data in each of their schools.
Thank you, Michelle. I'm Colleen Minor, Principal of Lake Shore. Can everybody hear me okay?
You can. Welcome.
Thank you. So as Michelle shared, we have a lot of data, but one of the things is that we have to use that data. It has to guide our instruction. And one of the things as leaders is that we need to put the structures and systems in place in order to provide teachers the time to dig into that data to make instructional plans. And so one of the things you'll notice here as a graphic is at Lake Shore for the last couple of years, we've been using a template where we have guiding questions that help us analyze our data, where we talk about, you know, what caught your attention? What does it tell us? What is it not telling us? Is, do we have celebrations? Because we always have to celebrate the good news. And where are the gaps? So we just describe the data. And then we also begin to interpret and figure out, okay, you know, what's happening and why is that happening? And then also to make action plans. And really, when we're coming to this, we focus on the universal because we want to make sure we're, our instruction is hitting the bulk of our students. And then also for those students that maybe we aren't able to reach through the universal, that we need to differentiate, and we need to create plans for those, for those students, so they can be successful. And as Michelle mentioned, we do the screeners in the fall, winter, and spring. And it's imperative that we give teachers the time to look at that data. So I can speak for, at Lake Shore, we had data delving days, October, January, and May, even this year, where they had up to four hours of time on our Wednesdays, where we just dug into that data. And also, as you can see with the subgroups, we were looking at disaggregating. We were looking at our boys, our girls. We were looking at, we were looking at, you know, who is in selective intensive interventions? We were looking at attendance. We were looking at special ed. We were looking at all pieces so that we could really plan and know how we can best meet our students. And so we plan our instruction. And then when we come back, like in January and May, we also need to reflect on our practices and go, what are we doing that's going well? And also, as a part of our data delving, we set the goal setting. I know this year we didn't do educator effectiveness and student learning objectives, but we still need to set goals. So our teachers still followed that process and set student learning goals in the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and again, we'll be meeting to discuss our end-of-the-year progress. And as Michelle has shared, this is STAR data. But when we're coming to meet with the teachers, we need a balanced assessment. So when they're sitting down for our data delving days, they're bringing our on-demand writing, if we have those results, our math expressions assessment, assessments, our unit assessments at the elementary level, or our district common formative assessments, whether that is our, our shared reading assessments that we have, or whether that's also our word work assessments that we have. So we're bringing multiple assessments at the table, looking at the data, and then really being able to figure out, okay, what do we need to do to move our students forward? So that's just one of the things. So we create these systems and structures because we have all this wonderful data, but it's only wonderful if we use it to plan it effectively. So now I'm going to turn it over to Diana, and she's going to share a little bit about, more about the structures and systems that she, they've used to look at data as well.
Hi, my name is Diana Lusneski. I'm Putnam Heights Elementary Principal. So along what Mrs. Minor was telling you about, we also do what we call a growth protocol. So there's an example of the growth protocol documented on this slide. So in the winter, we do an interim analysis to generate guiding questions. So in the fall, we do questions, goal setting, and action planning. And then we do this growth protocol in the winter and just look at our questions, set new questions, review our goals, and review our action plans to see if anything needs to be changed. So the students' SGP from the start, we look at that and put the students in quadrants. So you're either going to fall in the low growth, low proficiency, which just has us asking, what are we doing to support these students? If they're already receiving interventions or differentiation, then we need to look at what's not working and make some adjustments. In the bottom right-hand, you have high growth, low proficiency. So these students are growing, which is great, but they're not growing enough. They're still in our low proficiency category. So we want to figure out what are we doing that's working well and what more can we do to support these kids? Then our top corner is low growth, high proficiency. So those are students that are already proficient, however, are not showing us any growth. So we need to address that population as well and see how. and see how we can challenge them. And then the last quadrant would be high-growth, high proficiency, which is where we want everybody to be. So they're growing, um, and their proficiency level is right on target. Um, we also take demographics in. So we will look at our non-white and white. We look at if they're already receiving services um, like special education or English language learners, if we are already providing them interventions. Um, and we do look at our male and female population as well. Um, so all of this really just kind of helps us to look at the whole child. This is just one snapshot, um, that our, our teams look at um, when we do the process that Colleen Minor talked about. And then we add this layer on as well. If somebody can go to the next slide, that would be great. Thank you. I'm sure it was made up. Um, so really, we're putting all those pieces together. Um, like Colleen said, that it helps us. So our, our data teams, our RTI teams, leadership, grade level, we all use these balanced assessments. So not only the STAR SGP, but our common assessments, our PALS, um, to monitor our progress from building level all the way down to individual students. Um, we use this data to goal-set an action plan to determine what differentiations we need and to set our tier-two and tier-three interventions and to support our students. So the frameworks that we have in place at our building level really just support our whole equitable, volatile systems of support. Um, and now up next is Becky Graff, who's going to tell you the district's next steps.
Thank you to our principals. And I'm Becky Graff, the Director of Academic Services. So using the EMLSS framework as a guide for our targets, our district uses data to inform next steps in several areas. Today, we're going to highlight two interconnected areas at the district level. Collaboration teams and professional learning is powerful next steps to improve student learning. Our teachers are evaluated on their ability to share content with students. Their success occurs only when student success occurs. We want to see our teachers continually improve in their ability to prepare lessons and classroom environments, to teach, and then to reflect and adjust based on their classroom data. When teachers are able to share their successes, the whole system improves. A professional learning system encourages teachers and school leaders to embrace a learning stance and to be vulnerable. They learn to open their practice to improve, helping our lead learners/teachers trust, share, and collaborate positively impact student learning. This year, our elementary schools chose teacher leaders to participate in essential learning overview teams. One grade-level representative per elementary school met regularly to determine the most essential content. They also determined the pace at which their individual teams tackled the content. These teams are led and facilitated by teachers. Their voice is vital in shaping the curriculum, instructional practices, and classroom assessments. Using collaboration protocols, our student data, and research-based best practices, these teams guide the school-based teams in staying on track. As we've visited classrooms this year, we're seeing positive evidence that this practice of using ELO teams is working well. Teachers have shared with us how important it is to know what is most essential for our students and adjust based on how building teams are performing. We're hearing common language across schools, both with teachers and with students. We're seeing common learning targets and common levels of rigorous expectations. The ELO collaborative teams will continue next year. Another team of teacher leaders focuses on content. High-quality, standards-aligned, and culturally-relevant instructional materials are at the heart of instruction and at the foundation of meaningful professional learning and collaboration. These materials ground teachers' learning in the work they do with students and serve as both a focus and a catalyst for professional learning. Multiple types and forms of student learning data, for example, teacher observation, students' products, surveys and performances, formal interim assessments, and summative test results aligned to standards and to each other so that the decisions and judgments made at different levels mutually reinforce each other. The curriculum and assessments teachers use with students are front and center in the collaboration of content leadership teams. This group of teams focus on instructional materials. They also focus on the instructional practices or pedagogy necessary to ensure our students can access the content. These teams choose curriculum materials for adoption and place emphasis on the vertical alignment of tools and resources. And these teams also develop the base for our ELO teams to make adjustments. Our instructional coaches play a vital role in our schools as well. Their role cements the collaboration tools within grade-level professional learning communities and helps implement the actions of the ELO teams and the content teams. Moving into next year, our instructional coaches will model collaboration practices to improve instruction and collaboration. This job-embedded professional learning is non-evaluative and focuses on improvement. For example, coaches can help teams look at student work, analyze lesson tasks, and facilitate teacher-led learning walks. Educators are supported to talk frankly about teaching and student learning by focusing on student work and teaching practice rather than on the individual teacher. We focus on opening up our practice. College engage in a collaborative inquiry process that uses students' learning and teachers' concern as the starting point and digs deep beneath the surface to understand the root causes of learning challenges that different groups of students are having and plan how to address those issues in their instruction. All of this requires educators to work collaboratively in a way that is efficient, effective, supportive, and mutually accountable. In addition to the focus on teacher leaders, professional learning for all is also based on our data. Learning and improvement happen when learners, both adults and children, feel safe and are motivated to learn. We have learning plan for new teachers as well as back-to-school sessions for all teachers. Additionally, schools can meet site-based needs throughout the year while also tapping into larger district-led sessions. Having teacher and principal voice in choosing those such sessions is essential. We are a learning institution, and everyone has the opportunity to improve and grow. During our five-district PDIP days, staff will have the opportunity to engage in several sessions. While the planning for exact topics is still underway, our data shows equity and social-emotional learning are two areas of need. Technology and content-based sessions are necessary as well. In the afternoons of these days, all staff have dedicated time for collaboration and instructional planning. Here is one place the ELO teams, the content lead teams, and coaches put their work into action. Focused planning of system structures ensure that high-quality content reaches every student. Learning is the reason schools exist. It must be the work of school leaders and teachers just as much as it is the work of students. Creating the conditions for building educator expertise demands a systems approach to professional learning. Using data to impact systemic improvement in professional learning and collaboration will have a positive impact on student learning. And now we would open it up to questions.
Thank you. Comments or questions for board members? For my colleagues that are attending virtually tonight because of the, some of the changes that we noticed last time with the WebEx format, I will ask if you'd like to be recognized to physically raise your hand so I can see you rather than just unmuting your mic. Uh, thank you. And unsurprisingly, Dr. Johnson, thank you.
Unsurprisingly. Uh, I, I appreciate the, the presentation. And I, you know, I, um, I have, I have a comment and then a question moving forward. Uh, and, 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 and the question, I'll start with the question moving forward. I, as these reports become, um, you know, I think, uh, expected and more continuous, I, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna request that we have a, a lot more information. I guess I was, I was, I was a little bit shocked, you know, of the title of the presentation when it says, you know, it says strategically using data. And, uh, uh, I, I think the way that this data moving forward should be used to identify the strategies that lead to changes in the learning outcomes of students. And, and for me, that, that the, the learning outcomes are, uh, are, are not just captured in just, uh, these standardized, standardized assessments. And so for me, what, what are the means that we're utilizing to achieve those? And, and the last part of this, of this presentation, um, you know, I, I assume that these are, these are the strategies that, uh, 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 that are, that are being, that are the focus. But it's really, how do, how do we know these strategies are even, even effective? And, 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 and changing anything for the learning outcomes of our particular student? Who, how, what, what data do we have that tells us that the effectiveness of PD wins on the learning outcomes of, of, of students? And so for me, as, 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 as we, as we move forward, I really would like to, the kind of, what, what's the effectiveness of the quote-unquote strategy? And what are the strategies aligned? Uh, uh, these teaching strategies aligned with, uh, moving the needle on these standardized, standardized assessments? And I guess, you know, hopefully, you know, I think, uh, Mr. Schmidt talked about the triangulation process that would take place. Uh, I, I think a couple of the principals talked about, uh, various assessment modalities that are put in place. And hopefully, in those assessment modalities that we, uh, that we move beyond, uh, uh, the idea of just norm, norm reference assessment, standardized assessment procedures. And, because the reason, the reason I'm troubled because all of the, uh, the data tells us who has more something. That's what norm reference assessments tell us. Uh, but how much of something? I really, how much do those individuals who are in, what's the, uh, what's the title that you guys used in the, in the growth table there? So for those individuals in, in advance, how much, how much do they know in that, in that advanced category as it relates to math and/or our reading? Like what can we dive into that? So as, as we move forward and putting together these reports, and, and the reason I, the, the reason I'm, I'm troubled by a lot of this, I'm not sure we saw some significant, uh, some significant or non-significant movement in those particular categories. But the, the, I'm not sure the data, the data will change that much historically if we're not actually addressing, addressing actually what strategies and changing those strategies that we're using to kind of really, uh, uh, impact the, the learning outcomes of students. Because it's quite possible that we probably see no movement, but there's actually some valuable learning experiences still taking place. There's some valuable strategies teachers are using, and there's some learning experiences that, that students are benefiting, benefiting from. You know, I think that the, the apparent piece there is we still, there's some issues as it relates to, uh, as it relates to, uh, to race, socioeconomic status, um, you know, which is, appears to be systemic in our particular district. So, you know, it was more, more of a comment, but it's really, how do you, or how, moving forward, what would be the approach to also include in these standardized and norm reference assessments? The actual strategy that teachers are using, uh, to, uh, address learning outcomes? Really, how, is there a way? Do you see a way of also including, or providing us information as it relates to that? Uh, thank you.
So there's a lot there. Um, I'll try to bring it down just to a couple of areas. And Michelle, I'm going to queue you up in just a second just to address the question about norm referencing and, and basically just a resumery of how student growth percentiles work. I would also remind you as well that the board did receive an additional document with more detail broken down by, um, uh, by subgroups in their materials separate from the public documents for, for you to look at. And again, I do caution, um, we, we see this as a practice session for the board, and, and the questions you're raising are some of the same ones we raised as well. Um, this is not a comprehensive dataset at all. Um, we typically want to look at many more pieces, but a lot of those pieces, for example, are, um, we look, we do not just look at achievement data. We also look at demographics. We look at, um, uh, perception data, which we're about to collect later this month. There's a lot of other pieces that are going to be coming in to, to broaden the picture because, um, as I said at the beginning, this is a pretty narrow slice, a bit of a practice round, if you will. The question about how do we know, um, what will work? We actually, um, the research has been done for us. Um, we have Marzano's work, we have Hattie's work, we have a lot of work on effect sizes about effective instructional strategies. So, um, but we also know that in some of the research done in the 90s even, the only thing that they found in successful schools that was consistent across the board was professional learning communities, collaborative structures. And in buildings, regardless of the, the items that they tackle, if they do that in a collaborative fashion, and as Becky mentioned, the opening of practice, um, not that, and by what that means is that we're willing to have an open, honest discussion about what goes on in our classroom at people visit and have some of those conversations in a collaborative fashion. I mean, really, they're in the data. That, that is not a simple process. It may seem simple from the outside. Um, but for people to, to move in that direction is a great challenge. So the strategies that we can work on, and actually, one of the challenges you have is not trying to grab too many at one time. For example, one of the ones we've been pointing to is academic discourse. You know, if you can really get your students to focus around academic discourse is something that transcends multiple content theories and has a positive profound effect. Another one is students, um, doing much more than the, um, setting goals on their own assessments and progress in, in monitoring their own progress has an enormous impact on student learning. You try, if you try too many of those things at one time, um, you know, you become, you don't become a champion in any of them. So that's part of the work that, um, as Diana and, and, and Colleen were talking about, as they were talking about, like, trying to really look at, um, the data that they have and really trying to make strategic decisions. And that was the reason for that term strategic was, you have a lot of data, but you have to make some, you have to make some very, um, calculated determinations of next steps. Um, you can try to grab everything, but that won't work. And so what are the things, what are your data telling you in terms of your next steps? But if you want to have Michelle, now that I give her a little bit of time to queue up, just talk about again, you're talking a lot about norm referencing and just, um, that idea of us, about, in this particular, um, assessment, the student growth percentile really does move us away from a bell curve. It really does look at students who start in similar spots and what is that typical growth trajectory? So Michelle, can you just, uh, and, and how the term norm referencing does and does not apply in this situation?
Yeah, so, um, Markel, you hit really on why we, um, have moved towards the SGP to use that is because it isn't, um, you know, we can, when we look at the students that are in the below basic, basic, proficient, and advanced, it does really become a bell curve. And you have, you know, your percentile ranks, um, our kids nine, one to 99, it is a bell curve where they, where they rate against their peers in a percentile rank. An SGP, what that does is it meets a kid where they're at. So if I score a, um, a 400 scale score on my first initial assessment, I'm going to put it, get put into a pool of kids that are scoring at that same level. And then it's going to, like, do, how much, if I needed to make years' worth of growth, what is the scale score I would need to get to? To be saying that I should get to a year's worth of growth if I get to this scale score? Um, and if I get that, I'm going to get a 99 SGP. And so with, the reason we're looking at that is we believe that all students should be in a typical or a high-growth area. We should not have students that are in that low-growth where they're at a one to a 34, where they're in jeopardy of, um, not making a year's worth of growth in a year's worth of school. So that's why every student can get to that 35 SGP. And that's why we like to, um, look at that is because we're meeting them where they're at and how we're, what we're doing, how is that impacting the way they're growing throughout the year? We can do, um, it's, it's amazing on these norm reference tests that they are, they're seeing that. And so on the forward exam, they're giving us growth scores on, on the STAR, on Ames Web. They give us growth because they know that that's important, that we do need to meet kids where they're at, and we need to start closing that gap. Does that make sense? Did I answer that?
Thank you, Michelle.
Uh, yeah, you know, and and I I I appreciate it. I I I kind of see where you 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 you're trying to move past that general assumption of norm reference. The norm reference assessment piece. I it once again, though, I I I struggle and, uh, uh, you know, Mr. Schmidt, I I I saw the pin mix that we have access to. Once again, it's a strategic absence, I I I think in that particular, uh, that that data set, uh, that you have. But for me, and and I guess this other piece, the the underlying assumption that, you know, those some of those strategies that Mr. Smith utilized. That, you know, you guys, uh, are are having throughout the district. Who's who's to say I I I I would argue that actually a few of those strategies are applicable to individual schools. And so what I'm interested in is it's really how do we? How how do we, uh, get at information that's, uh, uh, effective at the at at school level? Or at the grade level and for and and for teachers and and not this whole idea that universally? All of this will actually be thrown at all schools and all teachers at the same time, but I appreciate, uh, I appreciate that, uh, that clarification. Thank you.
Uh, just one more thing, Markel. Um, as you know, um, Diana was talking about her quadrant protocol. I think that's one of the things that when we look at those students that are at like a high, we we want them to be in high growth, whether it's high growth, high proficiency or high growth, low proficiency. Because those low proficiency kids will start closing the gaps. But one of the things that our schools are starting to do is they're starting to look at those students that are making high growth. And they're starting to look at what are the strategies that teachers are using? That are allowing kids to grow at that level to help us start to close that gap. So those questions are starting to be asked and and we need to continue to ask those questions in more and more of our our collaboration meetings that we're having. Um, so I that might help a little too.
I think the other, um, thing that, um, Becky Grab talked about, um, and I heard, uh, it was mentioned earlier, but she really drove home the idea of equitable practices. Um, you know, last week we had this training and, uh, or a couple of weeks ago with U W player and he talked about like what sort of low hanging fruit can we do to try to make change, uh, for students? And I'd argue that just about anything you change is not a low hanging fruit. It's actually pretty difficult to change the routines and structures that exist in schools. Um, and that's where, um, both Colleen and and, um, and Diana and Becky and Michelle all talked about that if those collaborative teams collectively work on it and open up that practice. You see more shifts. Um, it's very difficult just to tell someone, you know, do this or that differently in your classroom and expect the outcome to be different. Um, you you the the I love the the protocol that's up on here. Um, the part I love about this the most is where you actually see rolling into students in there and you have conversations about real kids, student X, student Y, student Z, et cetera. Um, because you really start to to personalize, um, which moves it away from sort of abstract, how do we get better at teaching in terms of how do we help this student get better? Um, and when and when I go on this slide, when Diana was talking about. Um, what is it that the students in the high growth area are doing that is helping them start to close gap? Um, that's the type of conversations that teacher teams have to have and it happens in very small groups and increments and and again, when they start looking at their, um, and the steps they're going to take. Even though very strategic decisions and, um, and trying to make sure that they are in line with with the rest of the work with the building and the resources that they have in a systemic way.
Michelle, sir. So I'm I'm going to attempt to articulate this. So this is, I think it's it's going to be a learning curve for all of us as we go. Um, uh, so some of the notes that I that I took, I I really found it was questions about about length of time. How long have these, um, collaborative teams? Been in place? How long have we been using instructional coaches the way that we have? What data can we pull to say? Are instructional coaches effective? At what they do like I I want to see the effectiveness of the investment that we are making into moving the needle on student growth and achievement. So like I kept I kept asking how, uh, how how long? Where what's the effectiveness of that intervention? What is the effectiveness of that? Um, role and 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 to only and I will just say that it I I the the slides that were most that that I found most useful were or the 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 two years side by side. Um, and I the fact that we only have pandemic years to look at, I I think that we need we need more than that. Because I I want to see what we're doing over a long period of time and and are we moving the needle? Because we can be, I think the things that I, as a board member, what I want to see is that the investments that we're making and where we're putting our money is working. And if it's not working, then we need to ask some real serious questions about, well, what are we going to try that that's? That is going to work. That is going to move the needle. What what where are we going to see progress? So to only see data from two years, um, and particularly challenging years for for student growth. Um, I think I would have liked to have seen more of that. I also would have liked to have seen it. Um, i- in some sort of comparison, whether that is. Um, I I suppose I guess I don't really understand data, so maybe you can answer this question, but, um, so is is it kind of implied the comparison between? Students, uh, is it a statewide comparison? Is it a district wide comparison when we say, oh, they're performing this way compared to to their peers or what we expect? What what is the comparison point?
Michelle, can you talk about the, um, about the data set that it pulls from for the for that, uh, student growth percentile process?
Yeah. It Did you ask me, Jim?
Yeah, please. Thank you, Michelle.
Um, Erica, it's a nationally normed test, so it's pulling from peers across the nation. Um, you know, anybody from New York City to Los Angeles, um, that take the star assessment it is pulling from. Um, and so we can, so that is from the SGP. Um, when we talk about the, um, the proficiency, so the below basic, basic, uh, proficient and advanced. Um, that is, those are, we can compare that to the state. So that looks a little different.
Okay. Yeah. So I think I think what what I what I'm looking for is just more information to 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 see change over time. And and specifically how some of the things that we do. So I I just wrote down like are the ELO teams, are they are they new? And maybe I just missed that. Maybe you said they were brand new this year.
So I I can talk to that a little bit. Yeah. I can I can speak to that just a little bit. The the ELO teams are new. Um, we set those up when we went, um, first went to our at home learning in March. We recognized that we needed to narrow the curriculum and what was most essential. And we expanded that work and made it more systemic over the course of this year. So the feedback that we've received from teachers and their voice is critical. They're saying that, um, having those ELO teams at the elementary level have really helped shape what they feel is most, um, essential in terms of curriculum. And then they're also able to talk about how fast they are going in relationship to, um, the other schools in in the system. So for example, at one school, they might say, you know, our students are are right on track and another school is saying, well, wait a minute, we're struggling a little bit. Our kids aren't right at the same point you are. What are you doing? So now they're starting to share instructional practice so that they can, um, that that they can gauge, you know, how they're performing and what they're doing for teaching and learning. So that is a new system that we, um, want to continue to grow. We've had, um, content leadership teams, but we're going to become much more focused with those, um, teams. And it'll be, um, I'm kind of excited to be able to share, um, some benchmark data in terms of those teams as well. And, um, we've had coaches, but I would say that, um, individual schools have used that coaching position in different ways. Um, they have fulfilled different roles based on individual school needs and our intent is moving forward to stabilize the role of the instructional coach. We know that they have an impact on teacher teams and then in, um, in turn on student learning. And we're go we've got, um, measures that we're setting up so that we will be able to assess the effectiveness of that coaching role. And we're stabilizing that role in every school. So we will have, um, additional data. Right now I couldn't give you data on the coaching effectiveness because I would say each coach is used in a different way. And so we're working to, um, have a balanced system in addressing what we know our disproportionality is, what we know our our achievement data is. And so we're we're working to stabilize that.
I think I'm gonna I agree with, uh, Becky because they have been using different ways. And also I have this slide up for a reason as well because the, um, the coaches in the past were literacy coaches. And we are shifting to an instructional coach model because we recognize through the equitable multi level system supports that we need to break our academics and behavior, that we do not act in isolation from one another. And that will be part of our work and that Becky is helping lead along with some others in our in our area. Next year to to work with coaches on a regular basis to so what does that look like to be much more effective and to bring that, uh, work together? And also to be very clear then with principals about the expectation for for the coaching, uh, when when the coaches return back to their classrooms. So it is it is difficult. I mean, as we look at implementation science and the implementation drivers, coaching is a significant, but not the only factor. So I need for us to walk away tonight saying, okay, we're going to put all of our like if things go well, coaches did their jobs and if they didn't, they didn't. That's that's really not, they're just they are a key component in the overall system. That involves coaching, involves training, like Becky talked about professional development for all staff and others. So it is a it is a complex, not a singular variable problem. Um, but we did recognize though, as you did as well, we wanted to get more out of our investment. And that's why we're making the shifts that we're going to make. Also, that being said, um, careful what you wish for because if you want more data, we got it. So we we have a lot and there's a and we can get it pretty deep. Um, and there's, uh, and and we we want to give you just a sampling that the board is looking for. Uh, we can, we can slice and dice stuff a lot of different ways and and, um, and we just have to be though strategic just just because we can, um, pull the data, what does it inform? Uh, and as you mentioned, very stupidly. We we picked two years that were very atypical years, right? That that were not, um, uh, that were not standard. However, the data set Michelle pulled from last year was from fall to winter, which was not impacted by the pandemic versus what was experienced afterwards.
Right. So I I think I think what you what you what I'm coming away with is there's there's a lot of moving parts and there's a lot of things that that change. And so it's hard then to measure the effectiveness over time, but because there's so many things that are changing all the time. And so it's it's really hard as a board member to 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 look at some of of the moves that the district is making it it because they're not happening in 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 isolation where they're where they're measured. But like you said, like you can't just hinge the whole success of something on coaches, for example, right? So I think I I'm trying to figure out what as we go forward, like what I what I what I personally would like to see or what I think would be beneficial for me, but I think it understanding how how long these things have been in place and what impact they have had. So just 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 saying. Um, that that the ELO teams that you're that you're receiving a lot of feedback from staff that these are that these could potentially be highly effective, that they're finding them highly effective. Well, okay, great. Let's see how that is a year from now, two years from now. You know, so I think I think it's just kind of knowing how long they've been in place and what form they've been in place. Um, and how they've moved the needle. So it's it's just tricky for me to figure it out and I don't know what I need, but I'm just trying to vocalize it.
I think what you're asking for, Erica, is, you know, I'll give an example of our instructional coaches. As we are implementing our instructional coaches, one of the things that we're doing and we're having conversations around right now are what are going to be our indicators of success for these instructional coaches? So what is going to be like from a year from now? What are we going to look at? And then how are we progress monitoring that throughout the year? Um, to understand if our instructional coaches are making the the gains that we want them to make. And so that's just an example that we have to, um, really look at what are those success measures of how we're going to? So a year, like you said, a year from now, we're going to be able to come back and report on it. This is the way we've known that they are effective or or not effective.
I guess I'd like to interject just for a moment here because I know we've got to move on the agenda. Um, when we talked about this at agenda setting two weeks ago, Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Zer. Um, you know, there were questions about the data tonight and to try to get more from past years. This was a, I think this was a good first glance and I i- if there are any types of things and I've been taking notes here because we expect to do at some point. Um, whether it's in two weeks from now or in four weeks from now on June 7th, a secondary results meeting. Now, this is our first, like I said, our first foray at this, um, first kick at it. And like I said, I've been taking notes and to kind of share, we would like maybe some history. There might be a history lesson. Um, I thought this was a very informative, um, first results of just a very tiny slice. I mean, actually, when we discussed this, we were, there was a possibility just to do first and second grade. And, uh, and just to talk about the impact of of this year for first and second grade. Um, I think part of it is that history lesson. Part of it is, you know, what types of teacher groups have gotten together, what types of administrative structures? And had these been followed with fidelity at each one of our schools as well at the elementary, we have 13 elementary schools. And there can be that variability too. And I do agree with much of what was said. Um, let's see, you know, when we look at the data and we look at the results, not just school, not just grade level, but down to the teacher team. Uh, and what would be our goals and how did we get there? What's the best second grade group out of the entire 13? I want to find out what they're doing and so we can replicate that. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to share that with the group. I appreciate that and and really what it comes down to and and what I've heard from each one of our presenters today, but also from our two commissioners. Is the work of Hattie, that collective teacher efficacy. We can't do it alone. Can't do it from from district office here. We do it with teams of teachers and we have to examine this data. As Hattie will tell you, what is it in 2017 or 18? Um, that's the most powerful structure to move that needle that we all talk about and to close that gap, not just the opportunity gap, but the achievement gap. So this is, you know, excellent food for thought in board members, all commissioners. Please feel free, if there are more of these, um, to get ready for our secondary. Um, please direct those through me and we will do our best to adjust that data and and present that data for you. Um, the way in which you would you would like, but I thought this was a a very good first exercise for us this evening.
You, Superintendent Johnson, I'll just say that, um, a few things to remember is that as we examine these results as a board. Our goal is to focus on is the district making reasonable progress towards those results for our students. And that the methods by which they decide to do that are the empowerment of the district to do. So it's important to realize that, you know, we might we might now. At the same time, Commissioners, you make a good point that are we monitoring the effectiveness of these things? And that is in fact a different part of our policy. In O E four eight, it requires that instructional programs, including both content and practice are regularly evaluated. But as we look at results, we want to stay focused on are the results achieving? Are we moving the needle for those students? And, uh, I think that is something that I would say to the administrative team, you know, that's what we need to hear about is are we moving the needle? And I think one of the things that I would like to just provide a little feedback that I didn't hear tonight, and perhaps it's because again, it's the first time in this whole process as we go through is going to be a discussion between the board and the administration giving feedback, what data do we need? You know, how do we need to prevent present it? So again, Commissioners, thank you for, you know, the longer that we can have that data to see those trends, we can we can help to to understand how are we making that reasonable process progress? I'd like to see possibly, and and again, this might be because it's so short and certainly it will have to come up for the formal monitoring report. But idea of what are our what are our goals? You know, on on just the basic level, we did see over this last year, you know, more of our students slide up to the you know, not making a year's worth of growth. And of course, this is an extraordinary year and I don't think that that's entirely unexpected by anyone. That it might have been more of a challenge for student learning because we're all of us are learning to teach and perform in a new environment. But what are what are our goals and what are our expectations then? Because we've we've moved in a direction that we probably don't want to be going. How are we going to get that? Those are the the forward looking, what are we going to do and what are our goals going to be? So that's something I'd like to see more, you know, when we when we see this data that is not where we are, we we wouldn't necessarily say we're making reasonable progress or, you know, we have some exceptions to that reasonable progress. Uh, and then, uh, to address Dr. Johnson's point. You know, getting at different aspects rather than just on standardized testing and whether that's normative or growth bases is its own thing. One of the discussions that Dr. Bika and Superintendent Johnson and Mina and I were having was that these results presentations are going to are hopefully going to hit different parts of the results throughout the year. They're not supposed to be sufficient for the only data or results data that we get. And the focus is also going to need to be on prioritizing three and our four, our two. three and our four, our two, our qualitative or results policies, the ones that look at what types of students do our research, as well as just the academic performance. But I just want to, you know, let the rest of my colleagues, I guess, know that, and you know, Dr. Johnson, you brought it up. I, I, I interpreted that as bringing up that we want to see more than just the standardized results. And I, I, I believe that's already the understanding Superintendent Johnson, that you're taking away from it. But just to highlight that for everybody, that, that these will be, will, will get different bits and slices. And of course, uh, and then again, uh, asking for that feedback of what sort of data would be helpful for you? What sort of data will be helpful for us as a board? Superintendent Johnson, of course, will lean on you to say, you know, if one of us says I need this sort of data and, uh, you know, Jim or Michelle shoot you a look that says that is a huge ask, that it's your responsibility to turn it back to the board and say, you know, this is a big ask of time, we need to have board action. And then we as a board can discuss it and, and ask for that as a formal board motion. But, but all this sort of feedback is the kind of thing that we're going for throughout all of these different processes that we're starting. So I know, I, I recognize that not everyone has had a chance to talk. I will ask to see if there are any of the, my remaining colleagues like has anything to add or would like to ask in question. All right, seeing none right now, I'll say thank you to the administrative team and the principals and our executives. Becky, Michelle, everyone, thank you for this first swing at it tonight. And I look forward to how this will grow and really become a well-oiled machine as we go along. Thank you. Our next item tonight is manage reserve for board action. We only have one small item and that is adopt the annual work calendar for the board. If you'll remember Commissioners Harder, Lyons and myself worked to put together the monitorings, the proposed monitoring schedule for the year. I mean, I don't know if it's possible for you to just put that up on the screen. No, thank you. As you look at the, the work calendar, a lot of it is still open and that's work that needs yet to be done. We'll be talking about it in our next item, one of those things on communication. Uh, but the approval tonight is just to say, you know, the calendar in its current state, we approve this is going to be our, our work for the year as we add things to this. And again, I'm especially thinking about the communication aspect of it that will hopefully be added within a short time. Now we'll have another board action to approve it in that state. So this is not to say that it will not change for the year, but that we will adopt at least the current building schedules. And again, primarily on the monitoring reports for the district, which will allow them to know this is when these items are due. So, um, what I will do is I will hear a motion to approve the annual calendar once that we have that motion and seconded. I'll open it for any discussion if necessary.
A motion to approve the school board annual work calendar for 2021, 22.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion?
That's a fair question.
Yes, Commissioners.
Whose responsibility or, or who will be maintaining this?
So it is the board's responsibility to decide what goes on it, when, uh, Maida will be the one who actually maintains the live calendar for us.
So like she will enter in workshops and board development and stuff like that as we're.
As we ask her to do so. Yep.
And then that will be continual, so it will be just a cyclical.
Right, so every year we'll have to, you know, reevaluate, you know, change the dates. My, my hope is that, and we may find that this is, but after, you know, one or two years, that, you know, the monitoring reports will basically be, you know, the first meeting in Ju-, the meeting in July is always OE1. You know, and, and that those won't have to move, but they, you know, they may. So hopefully there won't be, but some things will get changed year to year. Aside from just dates, of course, will change for the specific meetings. But hopefully some of this is more regular. I'd like, for example, one of the things that we've talked about for budgets is that Abby comes and brings us a budget updates. And one of, that one of our budget policies requires, you know, regular updates on the state of the budget. Well, that may be roughly quarterly. It's not on there currently, but we've said, you know, we can probably fix those into place, you know? And that this meeting is the one where Abby comes and gives a budget update each year. You know, and of course, we have the October adoption of the budget. It's always there, but those can hopefully be then fixed into place so that it's already known. Uh, but should they need to move, then they move. That's a long answer to a short question, I apologize.
That's all right. I just want to say, Maida, thank you. We didn't really fill in a lot of those boxes for you, so.
Well, she's not going to fill any of them in on her own. We're going to tell her where things go.
Oh, gotcha. Thanks, Maida.
Other comments or discussion on the motion? None, I will call the question. The motion is to approve the annual work calendar of the board for the 2021, 2022 year. Maida, would you please take a roll call?
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordean?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioners R.
Calendar is adopted. We'll now move on to our section on board developments. These next two meetings, we do not have a time for monitoring reports, so it seemed like a good time to work in some discussion. Board development will be probably a wider, I think it may be a learning session on something budget development, uh, budget wise. It may be various discussions that the board needs to have. Uh, the plan for tonight is to discuss communication and the tentative plan we talked about in the last Agenda Setting was to talk about the potential upcoming referendum at our next meeting in this same segment. But for tonight, I just wanted to have a brief discussion. Commissioners R, you especially have been talking about wanting to develop a communication plan. And certainly that's part of our board governance culture policy and something that I think would be helpful. We saw examples of it from the forest. We can see it in, uh, Sun Prairie and other communities that are using this governance model. Um, so I, I don't have a, a real formal agenda. I have a, but I'd like to have us have a chance to talk about some ideas that we've been thinking about, about what are the ways that we can engage with, uh, form, more formal communications, uh, communications plan? Uh, one thing I, I know I'd like to talk about at some point is setting an ad hoc board, you know, work group or committee to actually develop that, fill in that section of the calendar and bring that back to the board for, you know, an additional adoption on, you know, that. Um, but I guess at this time, I just want to open it to discussion. Dr. Bika, I might just ask you to lead us off because I know that you had talked about some of the things that you heard from Forrest was doing that had intrigued you as something that we could be doing as well. So if you, if you lead off and then we'll just open it to just jump in as like we would normally do in a work session afterward.
Sure. So what's something that really attracted me about Forrest's approach? So back when we met with them in January 18th, they talked about a communication plan. They called it their framework for the future. They have annual events of five-year and 10-year that they bring the community together to talk about what the community wants for their children. It becomes part of their results. Uh, sometimes they use targeted groups. They pose key questions, asking the community about values. What do you value about education? What do you value about your child's future? Uh, so these are very collaborative sessions between the board and the community. And I, when I thought about that, it's just, um, that, that approach just as a starting place really appealed to me. Uh, it's something that we have not communicated systematically or effectively, at least in the time that I've been involved. So I really liked that and if we could consider that as a starting.
Sort of the, like an annual meeting of the community would maybe large. And then I took them as having sort of larger events on the, you know, five, every five years.
Yeah, they said annual. I mean, it can be announced, plural, interactive meetings. Yeah, with the larger five-year, 10-year.
So what are other ideas that, that board members have had for, for ways that we can communicate? If you've done some time thinking about this or maybe, no Commissioners, you sent out earlier today some feedback from the ambassadors group. Maybe you'd want to talk about that just a little bit and then share maybe some of your other ideas.
Yeah, so I'll just share about the ambassadors quick because I think that that, that was a really specific and targeted e- effort on the board's part and, and I hope it continues. Um, you know, I think it's been waiting, uh, with all the transitions back to school, but also just moving forward, how, how do we actually want to develop a communication plan and who we want to talk to? But when, when we decided to go do the results policy work, we pulled, um, I, I, I made it my, my personal effort was really to, I want to hear from communities that we don't hear from, right? Because we're going to hear from everybody else. But how do we hear from the folks that we don't normally hear from? And so the first, uh, the meeting that we had back in December, um, Commissioners Nordean and Clements and myself asked, we divided up, um, uh, our ambassador group into smaller groups and asked them to sort of brainstorm on, on how we engage our community, who our community is, first of all. Um, how do we, in, in, or what, what are some of the things that are not working? And what are some of the things that we could do moving forward? Um, to make it work better? And I think that, um, there, there, there was a lot of great ideas, you know? And I, I think a lot of, of things that we probably already know that I think, you know, larger group organizing events. But I think what we, what I've taken away as a global thing, you know, to what Lori said and to what Steve said, is we need, um, more collaborative events. This is intimidating as heck. I mean, I am a very, I am a white privileged person and I have been there and that is intimidating. You know, that is, that is hard to get up in front of the boards and to speak, to have the time to do it, to make the effort to do it. Um, and I think what, what, you know, as an educator, sometimes you're taught to shrink into the background, right? You're, you're taught to let your, your students lead, to let them, uh, their voices be front and center, um, to flip it. And I think that we need, we need to flip the discussion and we need to put our community in the driver's seat in a really well-organized, well-facilitated fashion where we ask very targeted questions, but they're doing the work and they're doing it collaboratively. Maybe, you know, um, they're in groups that they're comfortable with and, you know, in a larger room together and they're doing work together. Um, and we're capturing that and we're bringing it back and we're somehow, um, you know, using that, that, that voice from our community. But I think, you know, the, and Josh or, sorry, Commissioner Clements or Commissioner, you can talk to it too, but that, the idea that we, that we make some, as Commissioner Clements called it, grass tops connections, right? Where we have this layer of individuals who are well-connected and we have those within our schools, right? We have our BEA, we, BEAs, we have our, um, homeless coordinators, we have our, um, parent organizations, we have our partnership coordinators. We have all of these wonderful people who, who are trusted. And, um, it's really hard for us to go out and community organize for a community as large as this one, right? So we need to leverage that, um, that's why we call them our ambassadors, to leverage that in-between kind of, um, the group of, of individuals, um, to, to help us get people out, to help us get people engaged. So I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what a communication plan would look like. I really love the idea of workshop-like events where we incentivize it, we offer food, we offer transportation, we offer childcare, we get folks in there and then we have, we have some fun, right? We have to make it a little bit of fun, um, comfortable, relaxed, not forum-like or listening session-like, but really, you know, humorful and we show up in T-shirts and you know what I mean? Like it's, it's fun and it's engaging. So I, I don't know. I, that's, that's kind of just my really loose, um, stream of consciousness ideas about it. But I would love to get the ambassador group back together with some form of it or some structure of it. Um, and, and try to figure out how we formally make a communication plan that's going to be effective for our under-engaged, you know, historically underrepresented parts of our community and the community at large, but those parts in particular.
I guess my, I, I think these are good thoughts about, um, sort of, it seems sort of implementation-oriented thoughts about how to, um, improve communication. I, I'm, I find myself thinking about how do we measure success with our communication plans? And, you know, just I guess in the spirit of coherent governance, what would we, how would we quantify success? And I'm, I'm not sure what the answer to that is, but, um, I know, I guess I, um, you know, when I, when I hear, for example, our, our student representative, our student representatives talking about the, uh, failure to hear the student voice, you know, that, uh, to me, that should be a metric. There should, there should be some way to quantify that as a metric and to put it into an overall grade that we're working towards, um, as a district. Uh, and I would say that's a, you know, that's, that would be a negative mark of some kind. But how do you measure it? And, uh, you know, just going beyond our students to other constituencies in our community, how, how do we, how do we measure? What would be important to me is how do we measure the engagement in a discussion about controversial issues? How, how much have we articulated, understood and, and articulated back viewpoints that don't represent the direction the district is necessarily going to go, but that we at least acknowledge those directions and address them to some, to some level? To me, that's important and, and a failure to do that should be, should be quantified a, as a failure, uh, at some level that, that we can look at, at, at a, at a high level on an annual basis. So I guess that's, that's my thought as I hear this discussion.
I, I would like to echo, um, some of what Commissioner Harder said. I think that our student representatives Zoe and Emery have been very articulate in letting us know that we need to, um, reach out and, and use those student representatives as the conduits of communication to a very important stakeholder group, the students themselves. And I, um, I think about that and I think about what, um, the difficult year this has been because I'm, I'm an in-person communicator. And if, if the students were here, um, and I could see them and talk to them after the meetings, um, I think that at least I as a board member would have done a better job. But I need to do more in, in outreach. And, um, I'm looking forward, uh, this coming week to interviewing some, um, some student representatives. But I also want to do an after-action report with Zoe and Emery, um, to talk about what we might be doing better as a board and how, how they can really serve in that communication link between board members and students.
Doctor Johnson?
You know, I, a- a- all the comments about the communication have been, uh, have been great. I, I, what I, what I want to also keep in mind, you know, whatever the, uh, whatever the metric is, the, uh, standard practice cannot continue as it relates to seeking out input and not doing anything with it and not being transparent actually with the communication that we, uh, that we receive. Our expectation as a board should also be the same expectation that we have for the district and, and the number of times of seeking out input, but then also going ahead and making decision that, that coalesces with kind of the, the impact from, from, from the students, but the impact that we continue to hear from the community. So as, uh, whatever strategies, the strategy has to also involve that in a timely manner, it is demonstrated to the community that feedback requested, information requested is, is provided back to them and that it's demonstrated that, uh, their, their feedback, uh, was at least, uh, provided, uh, a. a clear and ample opportunity to be heard. And so I, I would like to keep that in mind with what our communication strategy is agreed upon. Thank you.
Commissioner Clemens, I want to give you an opportunity here before I jump back in.
Well, thank you, President Nordin. I think Commissioners Zer kind of led into where my head is in terms of how do we engage people in, you know, my lens of view is how do we really morph more into a community development institution and not just an educational institution and use those best practices with how we approach the entire spectrum of people in our community. And in my experience, the way we do it at this scale is we have to build those partnerships that are, that are authentic and that are durable. And I think the way we start is to identify those people who have the trust and are embedded and are well-positioned in their social networks strategically to have the highest kind of, for like a better term, highest ROI, you know, how are we going to make the biggest impact both in, into a communication? I don't know quite as much about how to evaluate that well because sometimes we're going to hear stuff that people say they don't like such and such and we, you know, for whatever reason, make a decision that's not consistent with that. I don't know if that's, that's necessarily a negative evaluative outcome. You know, sometimes you just have to do it or sometimes you're, you're looking for further input, but you know, I think, and this is where one of our nearby districts got themselves into troubles where they, they had a survey and it was essentially evenly split and it's like, well, you know, what, what do you do with that? Not, not all data is going to be clear in terms of what, what you're going to do. So, but I would, I would echo what has been said in terms of, I think we need to, we need to have a coherent strategy around communications and it's not just an annual plan. This is like, this has got to be like a three to five-year plan and how do we, how do we get there into the big picture stuff? Because building those relationships throughout the community takes time and it's, it's not something we're going to be able to just flip a switch and be, and be that. So I think the ambassador program that was Erica's or Commissioners Zer's idea is an excellent step in that direction. We need to figure out how does that, how does that leverage where we want to go in the future with it?
Thank you. In that we have our student representatives, I believe, still on the line somewhere. I'll ask if either of you would like to jump in with some ideas about communication as we go forward. I recognize that you have one meeting left, but certainly your, those that follow you will want to be involved in this. So again, before I jump in, if either of you want to just go ahead and comment, if you have any ideas or things that would be helpful, we'd love to hear that.
In our meeting prior to this board meeting, Superintendent Johnson talked about briefing us as though we are board members and basically preparing us for the meetings that we have all the information that we do before we come so that we can bring questions and comments and feedback to the table in a more prepared fashion. And I think that is a really strong way to move forward and I think that'll allow you to get much better feedback from us than you have been able to this year.
I also agree with that. I think having more, instead of just the reports, I think those can be valuable, but more of a discussion would be much more beneficial because then you can get more input and ask us more questions as well. So I really like these new ideas.
Yeah, I think something that Zoe has recommended is referencing and Emery too, is that we did have some discussion about how could the student representative role change a bit with this new governance model to integrate them more into the overall, you know, questions and comments phase as opposed to just doing that report and kind of isolating there. But that, that can certainly grow in a, in that discussion. And that's, you may have heard me when I was talking about the new agenda that, you know, sort of student representative projects for results. So if there's going to be some kind of results report in the focus on results, maybe each of our student representatives takes one of those and they do a portion of that report from their perspective where they decide on, these are the results that I want to highlight and they, they may be positive, they may be less than positive, they may show that we have, or we're not making reasonable progress. But that's just some of the ideas that we, that we had discussed in a, in a short time building up there. What do you all think about basically setting up a work group, you know, maybe three of us? Because I think one of the things that's pressing on the calendar right now is to get some of these ideas down into, you know, whether it's, you know, these are, these are groups that we want to reach out to in these months. I don't, you know, even though we'll be aligned with board meetings on that calendar, it just, it can maybe be seen as, you know, we have a conversation with here, we have ambassador meetings, you know, X times per year, you know, these are groups that we need to line up with. Where is that annual, you know, workshop or get-together that, those sorts of things? And I think that might be the most effective way rather than having to devote, you know, if a few people get together and pose it and then bring it back to the board to discuss briefly and then hopefully adopt or maybe, you know, make some changes and then adopt. Does that sound like a reasonable plan, you know, to put that together and?
If I could, I would like to remind, remind everyone in the coherent governance model though, you know, the utilization of ad hoc committees is not the best use of board members' time. And so, you know, I, I would just caution that in our first meeting, using a coherent governance model, we, we kind of stray away from one of the principles of, of that. And so, because I, like I said, I would, you know, if this becomes a current trend, yes, I, I'd be, I'm not in favor of every time that something needs to be done instead of actually approaching it as a whole, that it's ad hoc. Because then I guess we would have to, we should revisit it actually and potentially the creation of actual committee to actually do this ad hoc work. Thank you.
Good coherent governance.
Yeah, this is why you were selected, not, not because you voted no, but because we knew you'd bring that particular insight to the, so I, you know, we had at one point in the governance culture, we had a governance committee as a standing committee and at some point in one of our PAG discussions, we chose to remove it, to do a lot of that together. And so I can understand that. Dr. Johnson, would you have an idea for what would be a more efficient way to sort of fill out the first draft of the calendar? I agree with you that we don't want to have an ad hoc committee for everything, but this seems to me bigger than, than getting all seven of us together with a blank slate, but maybe that's what we have to do. So I don't know if you have an idea of how could we get a, a draft for this, at least the upcoming year for our communication plan? Because I could see, to my mind, refining it as a group seems something that's manageable, but putting it all on, on, you know, down for the first time seems like a lot of board time, but maybe I'm wrong. So I don't know if you, this might be new thinking for you, so.
Yeah, I, I, once again, my unfamiliarity with the process, but I, I, what, one would, one would argue that the gathering phase in terms of different ideas by each commissioner were actually shared via, via email threads and then we utilize our 12, number 12 in this agenda board development as a time to actually bring, bring all of that together to devise it. That's what, that would be something that I would be, be in favor of more than an ad hoc, however, however the remainder of the commissioners decide to go. But that would be, that would be my initial, my initial thought process. And once again, I'm, I'm not going against ad hoc, but that actually goes against, you know, one, because, you know, I had an eyebrows raised, I think, as well as Commissioner Lyons when we, we heard the gentleman from DeForest tell us that they have no, no committees. None. And so i- i- in keeping in that spirit, we, we just have to acknowledge that and at some particular point in time, if there is a recurrence of trying to actually do ad hoc, then we, we will have to as a school board, a school board is actually reevaluate kind of our standing committees. Thank you.
Sure. So, I mean, thoughts that way? The only concern that I, sorry, I just asked a question and then I jumped in. The only concern I have with that is that how much, I don't know, I, I don't know looking forward, how much time will we have in our meetings to develop, to do board development when we have all of these other things? You know, we have, especially with the first drafting that we're doing with the monitoring where it gives us a chance to talk about, you know, what data do we think are missing? What do we need to see? You know, kind of, and then we're taking the monitoring report at a second meeting. That's the only thing that, that comes to, comes to mind. But yeah, like I would be okay with that. I'm just, I'm worried that we won't have the, the group work time, but if we have a, if we have a referendum going forward and we need, you know, time to budget updates and other development ideas, but that's my only concern, but that's also predicting the future and I'm not certain. I mean, we could certainly try to see. I just don't want us to get, get behind on it because I think communication is not always my, my forte, especially some, so I'm really appreciative of all of the ideas that each of you brought, but I have kind of gotten on board with Commissioner Zer, your sort of urgency and we need to have something on paper, you know, and commit to so we can, we can really start to improve our process and that accountability that Dr. Johnson, Commissioner Harder, Commissioner Lyons all sort of touched on as well.
See, I just think even in this conversation, even in just talking about it as a board, it, it has, it has greatly impacted its potential efficacy, you know, like to do it just two or three of us, right? It, it does limit the scope of, of input and we are a whole board and this is a whole board, this is a whole board communication plan. And so I think there is some merit to say, at least, there does need to be some, at least initial capture, right, of board. I mean, maybe this is it, maybe this is the initial capture, but like, I do think that I, you know, I want, I didn't have half of the knowledge of this board because you, you know, for the individuals who sat on policy and governance, right? And I think that had we done that work together as a board, we all would have been smarter, better, more competent leaders together. So I do think there's something to be said of, for that, but I also see the time crunch commitment issue as well. And if we're all just typing up our opinions in isolation, someone does have to go through and, and piece that out and put it in where it goes, you know? So it's kind of tricky, but I, I do think that there is merit to gathering everyone's input and ideas and bouncing ideas off of one another and coming up with something that truly speaks to the whole board and not just one or two or three of us.
Commissioner Harder, sorry, you can also jump in during this time. I was looking at Dr. Bika for a second and I wasn't looking at you.
No problem, I'm in no rush. Just a, just a thought about, yeah, about the ad hoc committee point. And I agree with the concern, but I, I guess I, I wonder about having something more like work groups that are not scheduled during the regular Monday business meeting, which as we discussed is already pretty jam-packed, but that we have full board work groups and that the ad hoc committees take that format. That's going to be, you know, that's a commitment of time on the part of any commissioner who takes part in those meetings. But it at least gives the opportunity for the full board or at least any board member who's, who's able and interested to, to engage with the topic and it doesn't limit it to just two or three on a, on a select committee. I don't know that it really solves the concern from a coherent governance standpoint, but I do prefer it. And I do like, you know, as we've talked, we've had this discussion in, in budget development, you know, what, what is, why is budget development needed in coherent governance world? And I guess, you know, our best answer is that because we haven't, the board hasn't fully delegated several of those important budget-related responsibilities yet. But still, I, it still leaves me with the question, you know, why would just, why would we cover these topics in depth and just limit it to three board members? Why wouldn't we open it up to all board members to come? And in a sense, it is open to all board members, but being a committee, you know, with, the fact is not, you know, it's usually just these three board members who turn up. I just wonder if a work group might be a solution for some of these, especially in this year when we're developing and, and building and creating a new kind of model of working, maybe some of that extra time is required. So just some thoughts.
For this topic, we just agreed to have a single meeting and the, there would be no ad hoc, no work group, one single meeting. Anyone could participate who is interested, it's not expected. And the goal would be to just bring together the ideas, what's been discussed here and any other ideas that people want to bring forward and then it comes to the full board. So very limited, just to assemble.
I'm around that.
Yeah, that's why, you know, that's my only concern is, you know, when you look at just what is the thing, you know, I just wanted, like, let's get something on paper. If we can do that in, in one meeting and somebody can say, take you away from that meeting, okay, I will jot down to where I think these can fit in and here's then the full board, I think that, that works just fine. And that does seem to get, you know, and maybe calling it an ad hoc committee wasn't the right, I was certainly picturing something more like Commissioner Harder's work groups or, and you're talking about what I would call like a single work group or working meeting.
You have to notice that.
Yeah, especially if we're going to, yeah, we do. Especially if it is a possibility for four or more board members who can't, can't act without it being open. We'd have to have it on a webex like we did with all of our development meetings for the governance anyway, but we're used to that. Dr. Johnson, how does that sit with you, with your ideas about the ad hoc? Do you like that idea of the, the single meeting or is that?
You know, I, I, I think, you know, with, with the sentiment of the remainder of the board members of wanting to do that, I, once again, though, I, the cautionary tale, we, we just can't all of a sudden have single board meetings or unofficial meetings to do the work that the, the board is supposed to do. At, at some point in time, the, the workaround will be is that we will have to embed in policy, whatever we call it, the opportunity to do this. And I guess, you know, it's, you know, this one, this one meeting just for this particular issue, and then there's the next issue that will require just this one meeting. That goes against actually the principles of actually coherent governance where we're, we're all together actually doing it. So I'm not, you know, I, I think, you know, you know, Dr. Bika's plan is fine, but I, I just would like to caution the, all of us that actually we, we can't begin a trend starting out in coherent government that's antithetical to the idea of the coherent governance model. And so I think just kind of keeping that in, in mind as we, as we move forward. I think, you know, if, if that's the thought process to meet as a group, whatever we're calling that meeting, that's fine, but realizing that this, this cannot be a recurring theme, then we're actually stepping out of, or what my understanding of the, the three times I read the Quinn and Dawson book underlines. And like I said, I have to probably do a lot more extensive reading and/or look at some other models of districts and how they utilize quote-unquote this ad hoc or additional meeting. But I, one would probably argue that if there were additional meetings, those additional meetings were actually called officially by the school board who actually meet and actually discuss those issues as well. So it's my thought. Thank you.
Something I remember from DeForest, when they talked about eliminating all their committees, I guess other people have memories of this, they did state that with that change, one of the things that happened is that board members engaged in significantly more work before board meetings. The week before or the, on a major part of the weekend before a board meeting, engaging in preparatory work. And so I had seen this, I don't know if that work occurred alone, if it was individual, if they are, I really don't know, but I, I actually viewed this as part of, that is the, that is the new direction. So we're not going to be able to simply step into meetings and everything. So we're not going to be able to simply step into meetings and everything that's here, but there is significant work now outside of board. And I still don't know what, like I said, what form that's going to take, but I just fit that form.
Yeah, my question was, could we have done some of this work ahead of time? Like could we, could we have somehow organized it ahead of time so that we all had our input and sort of pieced it in the calendar during this half an hour discussion? You know what I mean?
Well, I think that's what Dr. Johnson, you were getting at, right? Is that we could be, we could, we could try, you know, let's, let's get our ideas out for what things need to be on the calendar or what things do you want to see as part of this communication plan? Get them all together via email and then have that plan come back at a, a regular board meeting, you know, in the development time. I, I, that's what I understood you to be saying as a, as a possible way to do it. So we could start with that. We could try to communicate via email and see, you know, if we get to a point where somebody could volunteer to say, hey, I think I can take this and, and start to sort of piece it together and bring it back to everybody. And then if that's not possible, we could schedule a full on additional meeting with recog, with recognition that, that that's not how we, we must have handled this as a typical thing for sure. I think there's probably going to have to be some sort of building over this year for all these aspects because we, it was impossible to have it all in place going into it, but yeah, we, we'll, we are responsible for our own good governance. And so we'll need to make sure that if we, you know, take a step to, to get something done that we know isn't as effective in the long run, that we come back to doing it. I mean, is that, should we, should we try with just, you know, to get it done over, get ideas in, in the, you know, the school board email and then see where that, where that next step takes us? I mean, we don't have to have it done by the next.
President Nordean, may I, may I chime in for one moment? With email, we have to be very cautious to not create a walking quorum. So perhaps if we, you and I could maybe work together to formulate what questions or what precise information you'd like to gather, I would be happy for board members to email that to me. I could collect the data and provide it to whomever is going to kind of assemble it or outline it, but we can't create a situation where board members are having a conversation back and forth via email.
Yeah, Maida, thank you. That's important to note. And I think that that's still, so if we, if we create some, some questions and then you handle some of that collection, I think that helps to avoid that. And that seems like a reasonable bridge between what we're talking about and also legally performing our duties. Does that, does that sound roughly okay to everyone?
Yeah, and I think we could even have like a, I mean, Maida can do however she wants to, but you know, going forward, if we have something like this where we even create some sort of, you know, form and it's like a, you know, where we go in and fill in the specific questions that we want to gather and Maida can do with it what she needs to, but that way it's definitely separate. It's not on an email thread, it's gathered in, you know, kind of a, a very individual way with very targeted questions for what we're looking for. So I mean, there's a four categories here under community connections that we could probably ask some strategic questions around.
All right, well, I, I know we've run a little bit long tonight, just I think all things new, and so I, I will, we'll start with that and we'll, Commissioner Zer, maybe I will just ask you to do a little bit of maybe putting together that, what could that question look like? If you're willing to accept that and then we can move forward with that discussion. And then Maida, if you would note somewhere for agenda setting that we might need to sort of pencil in sort of goal of when will we return to the, the communication plan discussion as a board development topic? I don't know when that will be, but just having that as a reminder that that's something that we need to, to get back to so that we continue to focus there. Thank you, everyone, for the input and the ideas that I think is a very positive move forward in, in work on this. We're going to now move to our board debrief and I, the Quinn and Dawson book on the art of governing apparently suggests that the rotating member of agenda setting perhaps facilitate the debrief session and that would, that happened to be Commissioner Lyons last time, so we asked him to do that. So Commissioner Lyons, I'll just turn it over to you to just explain a little bit about what we're going to do and then just take us through the exercise.
Sure. So as we roll out coherent governance and we work through changes in board agendas and board proceedings, this is an opportunity for board members to reflect on what went well during the meeting and what we might do differently in the future or might have done differently during the meeting. And I don't think it's intended to be, you know, a, a, a long conversation. I, I have a, a couple of things that come to mind immediately. And I believe that DeForest talked about having this kind of process in, in their system. And, you know, and I kind of think of it, I kind of think of it as a continuous improvement loop where we might be able to learn lessons learned and move forward and improve the meetings as, as we kind of embrace this new, this new system of coherent governance. So as I think about the meeting tonight, I really learned a great deal from some of Commissioner Johnson's questions, some of Commissioner Zer's questions, on the, the strategic data as related to, to multi-level, multi-levels system of supports. And I think that that conversation just really teasing out some of the, the positives about that, but also some of the questions of the whys really came back to me. As, as I looked at that report, I really was focused in on that second grade and the why. Why, why was, there was such an anomaly in the second grade? So I, I liked that conversation. I think it went really well. I think that in the future, I hope that, and Commissioner Bika was talking about substantial amount of work before the meeting. I interpreted that as us doing a lot of reading and a lot of reading of data. And so as I reflect on, I, I want to really walk into the meetings with a more rich understanding of, of, of what's being discussed. And I, I think that maybe I didn't have it. That's, that's what could have gone better for me if I would have, I, I, I still have, you know, a lot of questions and I'm, I'm positive I don't completely understand. President Nordean?
Sure. For me, the thing that, that was, that I think went really well was our, just happened at our board development discussion. It was something that I had sort of hoped to have, is more of just discussion among the board where we're, we're talking with each other and looking at what are we, how are we doing our work? Being able to, to say, hey, this, this might go against, you know, sort of what we're trying to do in this way, what's a better way that we can do it? And everybody bringing those ideas and being able to use that to further our board performance that to me felt like it went better than it could have, especially because I had a very open agenda for this time. The thing that I would like to do better for the future is something that I did not do well for this particular meeting and that's make sure that each of our board agenda items are directly tied to one of our policies so that it's easy for us to look back and see where are we hitting these things, you know, especially for governance culture. So that as we try to self-assess, I think we've talked about potentially doing a retreat over the summer to do that, part of that self-assessment. So, and that's a responsibility of the, of the president, vice president probably, sorry, Dr. Bika, you know, in the agenda setting is to get those things into place. And I, I didn't do that. I had told Maida that I would and I didn't get to it in time. Maida did a good job of filling in many places where she could, but that's something that I think I personally need to do better for next time.
Commissioner Bika?
I thought it was a, it was a good first meeting. What I especially appreciated was the report on the elementary results. As, as was said, I think it was a great first glance and I could really see what, I could see what the future holds for us from that segment. And so I, I think that was a highlight.
Commissioner Zer?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know what my positive was. I mean, I feel like we did it. That feels really positive to me that like, okay, we've had this first meeting and it feels kind of like the first time you ride a bike, like you're like, oh, what am I doing here? But it, we were through it and I think we, we've had some really great discussion around how we can do it better. How we, and we're learning as we go, like how much time we're going to need in these first few meetings to like get our feet under us. I think, I think I left the discussion of the result, elementary results at first glance that you, which Rebecca mentioned, feeling like a better steward of our district because I know more. You know, and I think that feels more impactful, but I also think that I, I walked away feeling like I, I actually want to know more. Like if I'm going to actually lead into this, you know, in the future, like I need, I need more, a lot more. And I, and so I was really glad when you said, when you, when you mentioned, Dr. Bika, the, the, the time and the work, like I was actually, I felt really excited about doing the work. And I think that, you know, I, I would take Jim Schmidt's challenge of he has more data. Brilliant, I guess. You know, I, I think we're ready for it. I think we want to see it and I, I, I think I, I'm excited by, by the, by the leadership we can have with that knowledge, so.
Commissioner Harder?
Yeah, I, I was, I thought it was a good start. I, I, my comment is also about the elementary results report. I, I did feel, I, I would have liked a, a little bit more of a contextual frame for that in terms of, as just as a board member who's not an expert in education, I think I'm one of the few on the board who doesn't have a background in education professionally. And, but to have a little bit more context about what, you know, just putting into perspective of how, how we use this information to make decisions and, you know, what, you know, I, I think that will come as, as our, as our, this is not a, I guess this is not a full proper sort of operational expectations or results type report in the coherent model. I guess it's sort of a starter, so maybe we'll have more of that in the future, but I felt a little bit adrift honestly during that presentation with the sea of data. And I agree, there's a lot of data I felt like was kind of missing and some of it was in the, in the addendum, but it's not about a, a higher volume of data, it's just about getting that relevant data in there and that focused, those focused pieces. So those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll reserve the majority of my comments to my continuous need to kind of, I guess, embrace the coherent governance model. You know, I'm, I navigated through this meeting very uncomfortably. You know, I think as we prepare to embark on the idea of actually receiving reports, we all, we have, we have to remind ourselves that actually progress and accountability can either be demonstrated in data or it could actually be hidden in data. And so, you know, are disguised as something not actually meaningful to anyone that it was intended to. But yeah, I, I'm a, I'm a learner and I, I embrace, I embrace learning. Thank you.
And Commissioner Clemens?
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons, Lyons. I echo Commissioner Harder's questions just about making sure we're getting the data, you know, in a way that a layperson is going to understand because it's like, like Commissioner Harder, I'm not an education expert in pedagogy. So, you know, I don't know what tests are indicative of what and when we're, when we're doing these things. And I, I think having the data and reports presented such that someone from the public can look at it and, you know, they're, they're going to have at least some idea of the context, even if they're not someone who, who reviews materials regularly. And then just, you know, as we move away from committee work into general board activities, just to make sure we have this information more than, than three days in advance. Because, you know, in, in order to, to really digest the information and try to become prepared with, with questions or possibly even ask questions of the superintendent prior to the meeting, the, having it three, three days in advance is not sufficient for, for, I think, for many of the things. You know, luckily we only had one relatively short data report to look at this time, but I sus, I suspect that especially those three days coming over weekends, that not everyone's going to have that, that opportunity to really dig into it and be prepared. So I don't know what, what a better target is, other than three days is probably not enough. So that gives us more time to make sure we use our time together in the most productive way possible.
All right, thank you, everyone. Before we adjourn, because of the reorganization tonight, Maida does not have a set schedule for who the rotating member of agenda setting will be. And so she has asked me to ask one of you, aside from Dr. Bika, to volunteer to attend agenda setting tomorrow and off of that, Maida can generate a signed list of when you'll be on. So are any of you available tomorrow at 8:00 AM for agenda setting? Yes. Commissioner Lyons? Okay. So we'll have Commissioner Lyons as our third member tomorrow and Maida will then send the rest of the board a schedule for your upcoming agenda settings. So then at this time, I would hear a motion to adjourn. Moved in second and all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Or adjourn. Thank you.
Excellent.